11th Tiverton School Committee meeting to order if everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For tonight's meeting, before we go into the agenda, I only have one person signed up to speak. I would like anyone who may be interested in getting up to speak on any topic this evening to sign up in advance. I will be asking that all speakers limit their comments to three minutes and that they come up one time. So if there's anyone else that wants to sign up, if we could allow them a minute or two to do that, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And for the, we have two people that have signed up for open forum. I will ask if you wish to speak now, you're welcome to, or if you want to wait until at any point during the agenda, I'm assuming you may want to speak to the budget section?
No, I just have a general question.
Okay, then come on up. Jackie Souza. And Jackie, if you could give us your address, please?
Sure. Jackie Souza, 1080 East Road. I just had a random question, you know, with the kids were talking about it, having field trips. So my daughter's at Ranger School, she's in the second grade. The kindergarteners have been on a field trip, but the second, and I just heard the, I was at the PTO meeting, the third graders have never been on a field trip. I just don't know the, you know, the procedure with that.
I'm going to refer this to the administration.
Yes. Do you know?
And certainly-
It's not just Ranger.
Yeah, it's not something we have on our agenda to discuss in full, but I'm going to ask Dr. Senkione, maybe get with you a little bit later.
Just real quick, we try to make sure that every kid has that one opportunity per year. Probably early in the year, a lot of planning with the PTOs to make it happen, and most of these happen in the spring, so without any guarantee.
This is her third year, so we haven't got anything yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McNamara, did you want to speak now?
I'll leave it to the budget if I have questions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Going into the agenda, first I want to announce that we have two members absent this evening, Mrs. Pavel and Ms. Parkett. So we do have Ms. Sherman, Ms. Polish, and myself. Going into the agenda, special recognition, CTE program open house highlights, Mrs. Sherman.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to acknowledge the high schools' CTE open house that happened last week. I don't know if anyone here attended, but it was so impressive. The teachers are doing incredible work. They had students giving tours, there were students in their CTE programs talking about the experiences they're getting. I think the CNA kids were like the most animated group of kids I talked to, but it was so impressive to see the opportunities that are being offered in this building. So I wanted to, you know, acknowledge Grace Carrero, Lindsay Cudaro, Matt McGuire, Stephen Wetherell, Andy Gaitchuk, Stephen, Jackie, R.S.R.O., Lieutenant La Duke, Judy Moore, Jim Gouche, Tyler Brontes, Kevin Calisto, Adam Tracy, and Billy Phillips for their work as teachers in the CTE program. It is so impressive what they're offering these students. And of course, a huge shout out to Lee Cusmano, who does so much and pours so much of her time and energy into these programs, adding programs. If you hadn't heard, we're adding plant science, which is so amazing. And of course, thank you to Mrs. Craven for making that happen. So if you don't know about the CTE program or you have questions, contact Lee. She will talk to you as much as you need to know and tell you everything. She's so dedicated. So thank you for that open house. It was, it was truly impressive.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Chairperson's remarks. So I just wanted to let everyone know that Mrs. Sherman and I had the opportunity yesterday to testify as members of the public during the, a meeting of the Rhode Island Legislative Commission studying student transportation needs and system costs. This commission was, and I think I've mentioned it a couple of times in prior meetings, this commission was put together and is being co-led by members of the Portsmouth Legislative Delegation, specifically State Senator Linda Ujafusa, I hope I pronounced that well, and State Rep. Terry Cortrevit. Court Vriend. Again, both of them, tough names. Other members of the committee included bipartisan group of legislators, and I want to also specifically call out Mario Correno from RIDE, Emily Copeland from the Portsmouth School Committee, Anne O'Reilly, who's the superintendent of Bristol Warren Public Schools, as she was representing the Rhode Island Superintendent's Association, and Mike Burke of Tiverton, who's a former town counselor and in his capacity as a representative of DCYF in this endeavor. Recognizing that transportation costs have become a major component of school district budgets, including ours, and really rising to levels that have never been seen before, this commission was put together to examine the reasons for the escalating costs as well as collaborate on ideas to make improvements in school transportation efficiency across the state. Their work will culminate in a report that is expected to contain recommendations for improvements to the system from which the state legislature will have the opportunity to act. Tiverton is in the same boat as all of the Rhode Island school districts with respect to this issue. My testimony focused on the skyrocketing and unpredictable cost for statewide transportation for students with special needs. And indeed, we've, as we've previously discussed, our school district is looking at a potential deficit for the school year, and this particular expense is a significant part of it, and our state needs to know that their help is needed. Jocelyn, I'm going to give you an opportunity, because I know your focus was a little bit different than mine, if you wanted to say a few words.
Sure. So I focused on the costs that we incur for busing students to non-public schools. It's a pretty significant cost, and if we could get those dollars back into our account, it would certainly help. So that was my testimony yesterday, because there is a lot of discussion, how much we spend as a state on non-public school transportation. We are an outlier in Rhode Island. Most states have different policies, and they don't incur the costs that we do. So it's really important that we look at all of this, and this commission is looking at so many different things, changing the regions, looking at different ways for busing, and then of course, looking at possibly a pay-to-ride model for non-public students. So there's a lot happening. If you can look up the commission and see the work that they're doing, all of their meetings are there, all of their documents are there, you can see the meeting from last night. There are a lot of people looking at transportation, so fingers crossed that we get some movement on that.
I just want to, can you understand me? I'll take my mask off. Yes, okay. I just want to thank you both for testifying. It's so important when we're having these discussions upstate that Tiverton's represented and, and that we have representatives there from the actual school committees who are the boots on the ground, so that they understand, you know, what impacts, you know, us and what impacts our students. So I want to just thank you both for, for going and representing us.
You're very welcome. Well, that's all we have on that topic. So if we could move next to old business, consideration and possible votes. Item A, approve homeschool requests for the 2024-25 school year. Mrs. Crager?
Thank you. In your packet there, you have a request from one student who, for homeschooling. The parents have met all the requirements in the letter of intent, so I would just ask for your approval for that student.
Do I have a motion to approve the homeschool requests?
Motion to approve?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you. Next up, we have the FY '25 year-to-date actuels. Mr. Andrade?
Yep. So in your packet tonight, left you a memo followed by budget to actuels, year-to-date, January 31, 2025, which is about the six-month mark for the school year. So year-to-date spending totaled 18.7 million, or 52% against our FY '25 projected spend, with compensation, benefits, special ed services, and auto district tuition being the primary categories. Additionally, we have some fiscal highlights. As we continue to analyze spending patterns, we identified a few areas projected to exceed the budget. Those areas are overtime. Overtime's a little higher than usual due mainly to employee turnover, short-term leave of absence, and delays in payables from outside facility rentals. Second line item that we're analyzing that's projected to exceed the budget is speech therapist line item that has increased due to utilizing an outside agency to fill a role that could not be filled. Part of this was partially offset with salary savings. Auto district placements and evaluations are variable costs that continuously analyzed and fluctuate monthly. Projected remainder of the year spend has increased slightly from last vision of this monthly report. Lastly, savings, we did, we did have some savings that offset other exceeded budget line items. AMPM supervision, which is contractually obligated costs as dependent on coverage needs. This was offset with other compensation areas, which you guys can see in your packet this evening. Similar, there was some funding at the state level that was offset future statewide transportation, cybersecurity expense by RIDE. RIDE received a grant that was presented last night at the meeting that Diana Jocelyn was just discussing, and they transferred that grant down to the LEAs accordingly. So we had some savings that offset other needs, other budgetary needs, but there was a couple that went over. So as you'll see in your packet, if you flip to the last page, you can see based on our proposed budget transfer column, that projected deficit went up to $456,919. Any questions at this time?
Overtime, is that strictly for hourly employees, or is anyone eligible for overtime?
Yeah, that's just hourly employees, mainly custodians when they could be on leave or they could be out sick, and we have to use other custodians to cover those shifts.
Okay. Thank you.
Brandon, your estimate of the deficit moving, is that inclusive of any promised capital funding that we are expecting to help us with the heating issues that we experienced?
So that was taken out of this total, so our new total is $456,919.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I, you can look at that on page three, Diane. It's actually highlighted in orange, specifically showing it's taken out.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Just quickly, and as always, this will be released to the council now?
Want you to approve it?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this month's financials?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. All right. Next item under old business, FY '25 anticipated deficit update. As you just heard from Mr. Andrade, our anticipated deficit has risen a little bit to $459,000, and we've made it, you know, it's, it's going to be a moving target from now through the end of the fiscal year. I just wanted to, you know, let you all know that the school administrators, Mr. Andrade, Dr. Senkione, our attorney, Mr. Scangio, myself, met with representatives of the town both on January 27th and on January 31st to discuss the deficit and, you know, make sure that the communication line is open in this regard. The meeting on the 31st also included the Auditor General, who is, so I think all of the required parties have been fully notified of this anticipated deficit. Fortunately, it's, I mean, it's, it's a huge deal for us, but it is also a lot smaller than a lot of the other districts, what they're grappling with right now. So the, you know, the advice from the Auditor General was just, you know, continuing, continuing to track it, come to, you know, work with your town council. I do expect that, you know, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year, and if this deficit materializes, which we think it will, that we're going to continue to have to work with the town on a deficit reduction and repayment plan. That, you know, one of the things I've learned through these sessions is that that repayment can come over the course of several years. So we'll have to work through the details on that. We haven't yet had a joint meeting with the council, but I anticipate that we will. And I can also tell you that, you know, at least at this point, my understanding is that we, we will probably need to allocate at least a portion of the repayment starting with this next fiscal year. So the opening hole that we're in of a million six is going to increase by whatever we end up having to allocate for repayment of that deficit. So it's just something to consider. Does anyone have any questions on that? No. Okay. Thank you. All right. FY '26 budget presentations, energy budget, Mr. Andrade.
Thank you, Marco. You can go to the first slide. So in front of you this evening is a PowerPoint showing the FY '26 budget concerning benefits in energy. So I broke it down between different categories within our benefits area. So the first area you see here is basically your health, medical, life, disability, and dental. Going line by line, it shows you your actuels for FY '24, your budget for FY '25, and, and that includes any projected deficit if there was one in one of these line items, including, excuse me, and then the last column is a request for FY '26. So right now, this is very preliminary, because we're using, we're using wide-range percentages that was provided by our provider. So on the first line, health and medical premium is your biggest, and you can see that drastically increasing. The wide range we received recently in January was five to eight percent. So we're using a seven percent figure in that line item. Life and disability pretty much stays flat. That is decreasing in FY '26 slightly, just because of FTEs. Next is another big one. Dental has a wide range, eight to 11%. Part of that increase is our, our dental dental, who we use at the school department through our provider, is carrying out a cost of seven percent surcharge. So we're going to see a massive increase in FY '26. Medical buyback is just level. Health and medical for retirees, again, shows the FY '26 shows a higher increase due to what I just spoke about with the wide range of five to eight percent. Dental buyback pretty much has slightly increased, and dental retirees slightly increase as of right now. Going to the next page is your pensions. So the first one is teacher and admin pensions. Again, all of these are very preliminary. We actually have not received any prelim figures, so we're kind of just going off what we've seen year over year for increases right now. We do have a date of they're supposed to supply a better percentage or more accurate percentage by March 1st. So you can see teacher and admin pension is increasing about $44,000. Survivor benefits is staying levely, level. MERS pension is slightly increasing, about three percent. Teacher-admin pension is slightly increasing, three percent, and non-certified is slightly increasing about three percent. Before I jump to the third, I should ask for the first slide, but any questions so far, or you want me to finish?
Deb, do you have?
Just quick. Brendan, so on that second slide, you said that you expect better pension numbers by March 1st. When, and I think it's late, do we get better health numbers?
Health numbers are March as well. I asked them, is that what you asked? Sorry.
Yeah.
Health numbers are very difficult. I continue to ask for multiple reasons, you know, we're, you know, ongoing union negotiations, etc.
So they're going to try to give us something better next month?
It should be March. And the town's on the same side, because we use the same provider, so they're on the same, yeah, scale as us.
All right. Thank you.
The question I have is, in any of these estimates, does this take into consideration potential staff reductions?
It does.
It does?
Yeah.
So even with less staff, are real costs are going to continue to rise?
Yeah, I took, I took the higher wide range. As I said, I use seven percent, and I could probably bring that down a little bit, but I, I tread on the caution side for right now.
Okay.
Until we have some better figures.
Yeah, health and medical, something we'll have to watch very closely as we continue going through this process.
Yep.
Jocelyn, did you have any questions? No. Okay, if you want to continue.
All right. All right. The last side of benefits, before we get into energy, is kind of all your other benefits, so your FICA, your Medicaid, unemployment insurance, workman's comp, same, same idea, still waiting for some numbers, just using a seven percent, which is kind of the year-over-year increase that we've seen the last couple of years, as you can see in FY '24 to '25 to '26. Employee assistance program, you can see this is kind of level. It looks like a funny number. It goes up $1, but there's a reason for that. We're working with the town, specifically the town administrator and I are working together, to possibly switch contractors with the Rhode Island Trust. They're switching their recommended provider. Right now, we use a, a company that we've used quite a few years, and the Rhode Island Trust is switching away from them as their recommended provider. So we're hoping by consolidating with the town, we would get a better rate, because more employees would be involved under one plan. So that's the idea. That, that's an actual number we're tying into, which would be great, because you can see it's staying level rather than increasing. And last but not least, is kind of a change from UCOA, which is part of RIDE. It's something we, they want us to do towards the end of this current fiscal year, FY '25, and then fully adopt it in '26. And what that tuition reimbursement is, this is part of contract negotiations with NEA. Council 94 has a separate, which is on another line, but NEA, in their current contract, is offered $20,000 for their teachers for professional development and things alike. So at the end, you could see a grand total going through from FY '24 is 7.5 million, and it projected to jump a little over 8 million, and then, which is six percent, and going into FY '26 is going to be about 8.5 million, which is about five percent over last year, over this current fiscal year, excuse me.
So on this tuition reimbursement line item, where is it currently being?
It's in professional development, which is the five threes.
Okay.
I don't know why RIDE would adopt, I'm too new to know why RIDE would adopt a January 1st policy. It's kind of strange to me, but they did.
Okay. Anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
All right. Last slide is the energy. So just going off the bat, it's pretty much level from natural gas. As I presented back in October, I think it was, we, I was able to go back to our contract and renegotiate savings for gas and oil, gas and electric. So gas, you can see a slight savings of $500. Gasoline is pretty much staying level. Diesel fuel's staying level. Propane staying level. Fuel oil was FY '24, we had a rate of over $3. I was able to lock in a much lower rate this year at $2.69, and then depending on what happens in FY '26 with the next oil bid, I estimated about $2.90, $2.85. And then lastly, you can see the savings that was mentioned by renegotiating our contract of about $62,000 in electricity in FY '26. So year-over-year, FY '25 to '26, you'll see a savings of approximately $32,000, which is about four percent in this category. Any questions on energy?
On, on the electricity, is this net of any metering credits?
This is part of the metering credits, yes.
Okay.
Yep. This is what we pay actuels with, all the metering credits and our supplier contract negotiated rate.
Okay, good. Anyone else? I knew I was going to do that. Sorry. I don't usually have a lot of paper. I usually keep everything separate, but because of the budget items tonight, I asked for things printed, and I'm all agneesh here. Next on the agenda, so we're going to continue with this budget discussion as we go forward in the, in the next several weeks, reminding everyone we have a March 19 deadline to present our detailed budget over to the town administrator. So we'll continue to work on that. So for new business, consideration and possible votes, Tiverton High School tennis courts repair contract, $97,900, $795. Dr. Senkione?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you have a quote from a company who is willing to do the repairs in the THS tennis courts. I'll remind you, this funding is coming from the town council through the casino revenue. We're very grateful for them to award this. We feel like this was the most responsive bidder, so I ask you to vote to award this contract this evening for $97,795.
Motion to approve with thanks to the council.
Second. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have a couple of first reads under policy development. The first one being policy number 1142, health and wellness. Mrs. Sherman, I know this is going to be your first time tackling this, and just our normal procedure is really to just speak to the changes in the policy and not necessarily read through the whole thing, especially if it's an existing policy.
Okay. Thank you. So a little context with this policy, we actually had two policies, 1142 and 1143. 1143 was pretty dated, and much of the content of policy 1143 was already in 1142, so we condensed the two. A few changes within the policy 1142, so this is the health and wellness policy for the district. We had our first health and wellness meeting, and Karen Wetherell, who's with the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, was a tremendous resource, and she suggested that we evaluate this policy through their tool that they have on their website, the WellSat tool, and pretty much that tells you if you're hitting the mark, if you're meeting the requirements, or if you need to make changes. So our policy was in pretty good shape, we just had to make a few language changes. So the first section, "The district is concerned with the health and well-being of our students and the promotion of health and wellness of our staff." Just a little more succinct wording that aligns with the healthy, health and wellness component that we should have in our policy. As we go through, there's no, there's another paragraph in which it speaks to the subcommittee making recommendations regarding district's health, education curriculum and instruction, physical education curriculum- education curriculum and instruction, social, emotional learning, nutrition, physical activity practices to enhance the health and well-being of students and employees. So the language that was taken out of that section was decreased obesity. Karen Wetherell from Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition explained that the language has changed with how we address that and how we speak to children about that and the promotion of health and wellness in a positive light. So we took that language out to align with their wellness recommendations. And then a big section that was missing is the triennial assessment. So I added in here, "Tiverton Public Schools will complete an assessment of their local school wellness policy at least once every three years. The assessment measures our compliance with the wellness policy. It also assesses our alignment with the language in the model wellness policy." Lastly, "It describes our progress towards our wellness policy goals. Results of the triennial assessment will be made available to the public." So I don't believe we have an assessment to refer to from previous, so that language will be in there, so that will be on the three-year cycle to have that assessment. And then also a notation about unpaid lunch balances, so language in here that aligns with the model wellness policy. Students with unpaid balances will still be provided the meal, the full balanced meal. Schools will outreach families of students with unpaid balances to alert them of the unpaid balance and also provide resources to determine if the family qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And that's language that really dates back to an issue that happened in another district in which there was some sort of shaming and here's a cold cheese sandwich because you didn't, you didn't pay your bill. So that's, those days are long gone. And then towards the end, I included a link for the smarts, smart snacks guidelines. So part of the health and wellness policy in your district, in any district in Rhode Island, is that we are to provide the food service that we get from our food, food service vendor, meaning we can't do candy fundraisers, or sell soda, or sell snacks outside of what our vendor provides. And that includes before school and one hour after school. So that resource is important for all the schools to look at, particularly the PTOs. You know, we, we have amazing volunteers in the town, and we have very active PTOs. You can still do all of those fundraisers that you want to do. It just cannot occur during the school day. So that link is in there as a resource for everyone to check out. And let's see. The last one, so in our previous version of this policy, it stated, "Schools must provide a minimum of 30 minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity daily for all students in grade 1 through 4." That didn't align with the Rhode Island recess guidelines of 20 minutes per day for all students in grades 1 through 4. So the change is, "Schools must provide a minimum of 20 minutes of daily recess for all students in grades 1 through 4." It also included that it had to be scheduled before lunch, and I don't believe that's how it always works at the elementary level. So as long as the recess is happening, I don't see that we need to stick to what time of day it happens. And I believe that's it. That's the last change.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Yes.
The reference to school lunch balances.
Yes.
I believe that we have a separate policy that also speaks to this.
We do, and I actually just put my eyes on that for the first time today.
Okay.
So I, when I saw it today, thank you, Brendan, I thought maybe we should reference it in here.
Is it the same?
It's, it's much more lengthy, and when you look at meal charge policies in other districts, they have very specific language on how to collect on those balances. We, our policy doesn't.
Okay.
So for the WellSat tool, for the health and wellness policy, that language is in there just to ensure that students get a meal and get the appropriate meal. But in terms of meal charge policy, that's, there's so much more that it should be a separate one.
But these statements do not conflict each other.
They do not conflict.
But that's probably not a bad idea to reference it.
To reference it, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Questions outside of that?
And I'm going to assume also that Mrs. Cracker has reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay. No, I have no additional questions. I want to thank you very much. I know you put in a lot of time on this. You did a knockout job running the health and wellness meeting that we had last month. I'm looking forward to a lot of great conversation there as we go forward. And this is, I, I assume we'll be discussing the triannual assessment as part of that group as well.
Yeah, I believe Karen is going to get back to us on any data she might have for Tiverton specifically on previous assessments, but she offers so much in terms of resources for us, so I think we're going to be able to do a lot of great things.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up is policy 333. Oh, and before we go any further, I'm sorry, you did reference policy 1143, and we will be making the recommendation to delete that policy, but that is not, that, that's, that'll be separate as part of the, the next meeting. The, okay, policy 333. The policy subcommittee did get together as well over the past month, and we do have this one policy up for first reads for some changes. This was Ms. Parkett and I that attended that meeting. The spending plan and transfer of funds authority is something we put together many years ago, last updated in 2021. The recommendations here is that we, you know, in, in light of the fact that we are no longer carrying a large fund balance and we no longer have a, a lot of wiggle room, or as I may say, any wiggle room within our budgets, I felt it was important for us to, to kind of tighten up this policy, and it, it may very well end up coming back again. I don't know, but this is the first crack at it that we took. So in the second paragraph, you'll note that the, the change is that the superintendent or is designated, the superintendent may transfer funds. It used to say up to $20,000 within major budget categories, and so that would mean, for example, within the compensation line, you know, the superintendent would have the ability to, to move budgets around so long as we were informed. At this point, it is up, not up to $20,000, it's any movement needs to be disclosed within the major categories, and we would be informed of such transfers. Mr. Andrade's already kind of started putting that together. He informs us each and every month by virtue of his, his monthly financials of where these budget amounts are going to be changing. Then we have transfers of funds between major budget categories. So for example, transfers that would fall, that would result in a change in total compensation or total purchase services, et cetera. Those must be approved by the school committee. And, and that is something, it used to be over $20,000, and now it would be any dollar amount. And in no case shall such transfer result in any change to the bottom line of the budget. Of course, this year, as we're anticipating the deficit, it's a little bit different in our reporting, but the, the intent is the same to, to control the movement from within the budget. Then the only other change that we have here, we had listed major budget, budget codes as, and the definition of what those codes were. We've changed the wording to categories instead of codes. So that is it. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm just trying to make sure I understand. So
Mm-hmm.
transfer of funds between major budget categories must be approved. So one of the major budget categories, I'll take this off, for instance, is compensation.
Yes.
So if we're going to transfer, for instance, right now, we have savings of 58,312. If we're going to get to a point where we transfer that to cover some, something else, say in employee benefits, which is another major category, we have to approve that transfer.
Correct.
Okay.
Nope.
All right.
Make sure I know how it's written.
All right. That takes us through that agenda item for first reads. We'll put them on for a second reading at our next meeting. Okay, item 7D, deficit closing strategies. We have a few sub-bullets here. First of all, we're going to discuss and review the documentation provided to the school committee by member requests. At our last meeting, Mrs. Polish actually recommended that the school committee members, you know, take, take the time to analyze what's within our budget, ask questions, ask for documentation, and, and take that opportunity to study, you know, what you see in front of you with respect to how our district runs financially. I can tell you that four, four of the five actually did put in requests of Dr. Senkione and Mr. Andrade, and I do want to thank both of them for their hard work at turning that information around as quickly as they did. The purpose of my putting this on the agenda this, this evening is really to give members the opportunity to discuss not only what the thinking was behind their requests and the answers they received, but also to ask questions of others, should they have any. So I'm going to throw it out there, going to ask for volunteers. If you wish to speak, let me know. I, I certainly will be happy to explain my requests. And, you know, this is meant to be really just a, an open discussion to, to some of the, the finer points of, of what we're looking at here for, for making future decisions. So do we have a volunteer?
I don't know.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So I sent in a few questions. My first question, I believe, was in reference to the last school committee meeting in which there was a slide that listed salaries for admin in each school. So my question was, do those figures strictly show salary? Does it include benefits or not? You know, a benefits package is anywhere from 20 to 40% additional with the salary. So I wanted to make sure the numbers I were looking, I was looking at represented salary, and it did not include the benefits. And, and so if it didn't include the benefits, I wanted to know, how did we capture that cost saving? So Brendan, I didn't know, do you want me to read the response? Do you want to speak to it? Not to put you on the spot.
No, either way.
Okay.
Just, yeah, basically, the salary pages that you, you guys were privileged of seeing was basically all your salary, hourly wages for those hourly folks, and then other compensation such as longevity, step-in-lane changes, and any other contractual obligations, which could be stipends for coordinators and department heads. And as Jocelyn said, it did, it did exclude benefits, which I just presented tonight. And really, the cost savings would be, depending on closing strategies that are decided here tonight.
Okay, thank you. My next question was, do we have any internal positions that are being covered by a vendor? Meaning, did we post a position, no one internally bid for it, we didn't have any external applications, and so we still had to provide the service? Are we using a vendor? And currently, we have three employees from an outside vendor. FY '26 estimating the same if we don't fill those positions. So I, I guess probably what I should have asked along with that question is, like, what's the posting process? When do we repost for those positions to try to hire and not use a vendor?
We actually keep the positions posted on school spring.
Okay.
Even when we do have a vendor, and we continually try to elicit applicants and interview applicants, even if there's a vendor in place, and we would replace that vendor with a candidate who applied for the position.
Thank you. I asked that question because traditionally, in other industries, if you're using a contractor or consultant, a vendor, they get paid at a higher hourly rate because they're not getting benefits or anything else from us. So that was just a concern I had. Another bit of information I asked for is, could we be provided the information on what administrative teams look like in other districts similar in size? So can we look at a sample of districts that have similar enrollment, and how does their admin team compare with ours? So I asked for a sample size of five districts that have similar enrollment, which I did get the documents from the Rhode Island School Committee Association. It is really hard to make an actual accurate comparison because different districts have so many different positions that they qualify as an admin team, or maybe they list their principals on a different document, but then other districts list all their principals on the admin team. It is so hard to dissect that information. And I know you provided the overall information from the School Committee Association. I attempted to look at districts similar in size, and it's just, it's, it's really hard to follow. Some have directors of curriculum, some have special ed directors, some have assistant superintendents, some don't. So it's really not clear to me at this point if we can have an apples-to-apples comparison. I don't know if you want to speak to that a little bit, or?
Sure. Ms. Sherman, to your point, I agree with you on that. There's a lot of different terminology out there for administrators and so forth. I think I queued one document for you that I thought was most telling. It's, it's a document called Other Administrative Positions.
Mm-hmm.
And let me just pull that up here. Yeah, okay. So in this document here, it was comparing, which we can compare some, some of the districts on there to us, but it's talking about positions like human resources manager, director of transportation, HR benefits manager, fiscal manager, executive assistants, ESL, ELL director, director of operations, data manager, health network administrator, payroll coordinator, so on and so forth. Those are some examples there, but you get to Tiverton, and there's, there's nothing listed.
Right, and so that's where I struggled with that document because we do have someone doing payroll, and we do have an assistant superintendent. It just wasn't on that document, and so I don't know where the data comes from, or if there's, I know that's from the School Committee Association. Is there a better breakdown available to us from RIDE? I don't know.
We all report to the same organization, so our data goes to this, I gave you this one because it was a little clearer, but RIDE has the same data.
Okay.
We fill out the same demographic sheets.
Okay. It's, you know, just, I looked, just for your knowledge, I looked at Exeter, West Greenwich, North Smith Fields, Newport, Situate, and Middletown because they were the closest in enrollment size to us, and it truly is all over the place. Some have a director of curriculum, some have a director of special ed, some have a business manager, some have two business managers. Athletic director was pretty consistent. The salary seemed on the lower side, so I'm thinking they had part-time FTEs. Technology, I mean, it just, it varied so much, so it's really hard to, I don't know, I think I need more time to really understand the variances from district to district and what, what's happening out there.
So I wonder if it would make sense, you know, if this is something we want to dig into any further, is to, you know, pick the districts that we feel are comparable, and, you know, understanding right from the get-go that every district is different from each other.
Mm-hmm.
You know, just in, in my time here, I, I've learned about a number of other districts. I can tell you that in some cases, the finance director is going to be called, the business manager is going to be called the CFO.
Yes.
You know, and in other cases, you have the director of curriculum, who sometimes doubles as an assistant superintendent.
Yes.
We had that here before.
Yes.
You know, so I'm, I'm wondering if, you know, perhaps, and Jocelyn, maybe you and I can get together and try to dig into specific districts and do the research on the websites, reach out to these districts, and understand the differences.
Yes.
You know, and take a look at that as it compares to us, if that is all.
I mean, limited to four or five. I mean,
Yeah, right.
You know, really, because you get bigger, and it's just not relevant.
Right. And, and so I did start looking at other district websites, and I have to say, ours, I found more user-friendly in that some of these district websites,
AIT.
Right? I couldn't find contracts. I couldn't find the information that I can so quickly find on ours. But to your point- find on ours. But to your point, there are some districts that have an assistant superintendent, but then it'll acknowledge, yes, they're also responsible for curriculum, they're also responsible for special education. So there are many differences, and there are many positions that are similar with different titles. So, yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's a great idea.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So getting back to my questions. Sorry, two more. So the next question I had was about Fort Barton. If we stay at a five-school model, and cuts were made, what would be the impact on students throughout the district? And so, reading the response, we have a specialist at Fort Barton, caseload is 60 students. Ranger has one reading and one math specialist, caseload 49 for math, 38 for reading specialist. And then there could also be cuts with SEL, social workers. So it's, I asked that question because I want to know, for the town, for all the kids in the town, what's the impact? And the last question I sent was actually more for the transportation hearing last night, but I'll share it with you. I was looking at what we're budgeting for FY26 for transportation to non-public schools, and right now, that number is at 164,501. So think about that, $164,000. If we could get that back into our budget, if changes are made at the statewide level, that would be amazing. So that's why I asked that question. And that's it for me.
Okay. I can go. I'll be quick, because I can barely talk. I asked for, honestly, information that I think we've had available to us before, because I wanted to spend more time studying it over the weekend. I looked at our per pupil expenditure, I looked at the class sizes of all of our elementary schools. I did dig into and spend some time looking at the 10-year enrollment decline throughout the state. There was also some recent enrollment data that was published in the Providence Journal that was very helpful, that was supplied. I looked at some historical cuts for prior, I wanted to look at prior full-time equivalent cuts from prior years, sort of understanding what were cuts of, of staff versus what were cuts of things we added and then cut, because we added stuff during COVID, and then we cut it. So I really, I asked for that, so, because I wanted to understand what, to me, were sort of cuts responding to the decline in enrollment, and what those were. I looked at the lemon lime sheet that we're all so familiar with, because I wanted to go over again the trend of, of revenue that we've gotten from the town, from the state, and, and our expenditures, our fund balance going down over those years. And then I also asked for some comparisons for districts, and found it equally as frustrating, that it's very hard to compare. I know that RIDE tries to do that. They try to have a website that breaks it down, you know, FTE by, by subject, FTE by, you know, by school, and it's just very difficult to compare. I, I, I do want to say, too, Dr. Senkione and Mr. Andrade, the amount of information that I know we all requested, the fact that we got it was just, I, 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 you know, I, I can't thank you enough for making sure you got it to us, and you got it to us Friday, so we had all weekend to look at it. The other thing that I was looking at that does concern me greatly, greatly, and Dr. Senkione provided, is a document labeled FY25 federal grants. If anybody has been listening to the, the national-level conversation, I am extremely concerned that we are not going to realize at least some of these grants, and it totals 1.2 million. And if any of that's cut at a national level, that burden falls upon us. A lot of it is restricted for our, our children with special needs, it's restricted for preschool, it's restricted for CTE, and not having that grant of money available to us is just going to force more difficult decisions. And I am very concerned that, you know, we're assuming right now, we're going to get that 1.2 million dollars. Given the national conversation, I'm very concerned we, in fact, will not. So, so I wanted to see that, and just sort of put that out there for all of you, to consider that 1.6 very quickly could become 2.5. And, and that does, that does concern me. But those, those were my requests, and what I was able to study over the weekend. I as well want to thank our colleagues for, for the information that they requested, because that was also very interesting and very helpful to look through. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. To your point on the, the federal grants, you know, it is certainly an unknown, and a concerning one at that. I, the only thing that I do take heart in knowing is that it won't just be Tibetan that's affected there. It's going to be every single public school district in the country. And I hope that that won't happen, at least not anytime in the near future. So, thank you. I'll quickly touch on the things that I asked for, and I have to say, my colleagues asked for a lot more than I did. And that could be possibly because I've spent probably more time than most analyzing this stuff over the years. But, you know, a couple of things I wanted to find out about was, I asked that they research and present what other school districts in the East Bay or Newport County, what have they done in reaction to declining enrollment? Have they consolidated their public school footprint? And the responses I got were that in Newport, they have indeed consolidated to a single elementary school in, in a city, which, which is quite interesting. Middletown has closed an elementary school and relocated their fourth grade to their middle school. Bristol Warren, just last year, closed an elementary school for the same reasons. Portsmouth, they initially closed an elementary school, they moved their fourth grade to the middle school, and then once space became available, they, they redistributed those children back to the elementary schools. So that's, you know, that's just factual information. I wanted to know, you know, make sure that we're not out there as an outlier considering consolidation here. Next, it was assess and document the net, the net savings of a proposed consolidation beyond personnel. You know, we, we all know that a consolidation, you know, the primary financial benefit, it would be a reduction in personnel. However, you know, some of the things that we, we haven't really spoken to much, you know, school lunch, you know, we, we could stand to save about $30,000 a year on, on school lunch, if we didn't have students in that school. Transportation, you know, it's not known at this time. I, and this is just my personal feeling, that we will see some transportation savings, simply as a function of that decline in enrollment. And as we, you know, look ahead to negotiating that next contract, you know, that's something that I will be definitely pushing our administrators to, to try to realize some kind of savings there. Energy, school, you know, and we've spoken to this before, right? Any discussions we have about that building, none of those discussions involve shuttering it. So with respect to energy, you know, we're still going to need the heat, we're still going to need the lights, still going to need the, you know, the, the computers, et cetera. So there are no, you know, there are no huge savings there. And then, you know, equipment, that would, you know, the equipment would be accounted for, reduced, it would be moved to, to the other schools. Any, any costs I asked about, okay? If, if we're going to consider eliminating an elementary school, what are the costs that we need to consider? And certainly, the, there is the possibility that we would have to hire movers for some of the larger things. So it's something that we have to keep in mind. I also asked for demographic data, and basically, what I wanted to see, you know, was, what are the predictions for enrollment? Because this, this is, this decision is really a direct result of declining enrollment that's been in place for, for many years. So what we've been provided is a, a slide from NESTIC, the New England School Development Council, I believe it is. And, you know, among other things, they do enrollment projections. And what I'm seeing here is that, you know, as of today, they're showing 1,400-ish, 1,457-ish students. And looking over the next 10 years, the projection is that it would decline by another 200 or so, in that it's not projected to increase. Now, with that being said, I am cognizant of the fact that there are a number of housing developments being discussed in town. And indeed, land is being cleared for one of them. But, you know, at this time, with the facts we have in front of us, it does not appear that, you know, this situation with declining enrollment, both here and statewide, is going to change anytime soon. So that was my, my items. I, I just, Kim did also submit a number of questions, or, you know, some very good questions. I'm not going to speak to hers this evening, because she's not here with us, but what I would like to do is perhaps allow her to speak to these questions at a future meeting. And we can take a look at those things then as part of our continuing discussions over our budget. So next up, we have personnel impacts. Dr. Senkione, did you want to take that?
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to set the context for this discussion we're about to have with you. When you look at the composition of the current budget and the projected budget for next year, in round numbers, 70% of our budget is spent on staff members, both salaries and benefits. And you saw a little bit of that in Brendan's presentation. The other 30% is composed of special education, transportation, energy, technology, legal, water, trash. And I share that with you, because over the last several years, we've been reducing our expense budget. As the first way to look at a budget reduction, you always want to preserve your people, the most valuable asset we have. And we really have trimmed those accounts now to really the bare bones, actual spending in there. So there's not a lot of room to reduce those accounts any further, and that's a key point. So now you're looking at a budget deficit. We showed you 1.6. You've just articulated that that's going to go up because of a spending plan, and we've got some other information that came in. So that now is hovering around 1.8 million. So let that sink in, 1.8 million, reduction of our budget, and you can't touch expenses, because expenses have been reduced for the last several years. The only place to go to is personnel. Now, I want to remind the committee, and sort of give a state of the schools' address, that we cut a lot of critical personnel positions last year. So for example, the high school lost all literacy support, lost their bridge program, which meant absences have been climbing this year. The middle school lost their bridge program. Absences are up big at the middle school. They also took the biggest hit, losing several positions at the middle school. That's really turned the middle school into a junior high school. There's no team time, there's no PLC time. We can hear more about that. Fort Barton used to have two specialists, they're down to one. Pecashet used to have four specialists, they're down to two. Ranger remained neutral because they were basically at bare bones to start. And I'm sharing you these cuts, because that, those positions are gone already. So now, 1.7, 1.8 million dollars has to come off, and it, it goes to other positions. So I've asked the principals, we've been working the last several weeks to kind of, you know, what's this going to look like? There's no good answer, right? And so I think it's critical and important that you understand that the positions we're about to lose are going to have a drastic impact on the education that's provided in the Tibetan public schools. And in that decision that you'll make, there's certain positions that, you know, could be retained if, again, we talked about consolidation. I think that's important for you to understand, too. So with that as a backdrop, and giving you some baseline information, I'm going to ask the elementary principals come up first, maybe as a team, kind of go through that, and then we'll go middle school, high school. I'll let you, you can decide the batting order.
At Fort Barton, good evening. At Fort Barton presently, we are looking into cutting two positions, two teacher positions. One would be a third-grade teaching position, and the other would be a first-grade teaching position. We presently, at the first grade, we have 24 students going into second grade. And in second grade presently, we have 25 students going into third grade. So that's, that's very close, when you're taking 25 students from second grade and bringing them to third grade with one teacher, if there's anybody that moves into town or anything that way. That's, that is very close. We also have a cut with the social worker and with our reading math interventionist. That's very hard, when you have a reading math interventionist that sees, I believe, around 42 to 43 students on a weekly basis. Some of those students are seen once, twice, some of them three times a week. We know that that wind block also is a block that not only deals with interventions, but also deals with enrichment. We do see the product, the product that we presently have. And the product we presently have at Fort Barton is an outcome of what I'm presenting to you. Yes, first grade has low numbers. But we have proven, we have proven, even in Rycast, when we look at the third-grade scores, and in ELA and reading, ELA and math, we're first, we made a comparison with, we made a comparison with East Bay, and we are looking at surrounding, surrounding districts that do very, very well. And Fort Barton was number one against these districts. So it's very, it's very difficult to lose possessions where we presently are, because we know that there are great things happening. And I will say that I, I'm a part-time principal of that school. And I don't want anybody to pat me on the back, but I do stay longer every single day, because I truly enjoy what I am seeing in that school, what these students and these teachers are doing on an every single-day basis. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I think that all of the elementary principals all feel the same way. Ranger School's a great school. It's a great school. It's a full school. We have classrooms that are very full. We have teachers that are compassionate and want their students to do well. We did some changes with our schedule to try to improve achievement at Ranger School, and we feel as though we're reaping the, the rewards of that right now. We have plans to do some extra things as a boost for students going into Rycast to further increase our scores. The reason why we have had the improvement that we've had this year is because of the math and the reading specialists, the hard work. the hard work of the special educators in the building, the ability of the staff to really take a look at the schedule and say, we need to do better with this schedule to provide more supports for our kids. If you took any of those individuals away from our staff, it would be detrimental. That goes not just for classroom teachers, it goes for the support people, all the way to like a social worker that's offering SEL supports. The students come into school sometimes bearing the brunt of things that are happening in their family. We've been without a social worker for a few weeks. And luckily, we have a new one coming in, so I'm excited about that. But the brunt of those conversations has fallen to the school nurse, to myself. I'm not a trained social worker. I know how to talk to kids. I know how to help them through situations. But I don't have the ability to go into classrooms and have conversations with students in classrooms about being kind, being generous, how to navigate the ills of society that are kind of coming into their lives. Social workers are absolutely imperative to have in every one of our buildings, absolutely imperative. I don't have a guidance counselor. I have a school psychologist that comes in one day a week. So the brunt of our mental illness supports falls on the teachers, on the support personnel, on myself, nurse, the school secretary, and luckily, our comfort dog Molly. She's done a really good job this year. But to even think about cutting any individuals from Ranger School would really, really have some severe detrimental effects on our school community as a whole. I don't think that we could function and be effective without the staff that we have right now. Thank you.
Good evening. I could reiterate what my colleagues have said. I've had the pleasure of working to support the students and families of Tiverton for almost a decade and been in several roles. And I'm so impressed with each of the schools and what our teachers do with oftentimes less resources, excuse my voice, I'll try and be brief, than, than their counterparts in other towns. Pecassett School is fabulous. I know for a fact the other schools are too. And Pecassett's scores have been soaring. We have had cuts, as Dr. Senkione mentioned, that were significant last year, going into this school year. And additional cuts would definitely have an impact similar to what Ms. Pont spoke about. As Mr. Aruda said, our teachers do great things. And that's not specific to any one school. I think we, with a little push and the right, the right budget structure in terms of supports, can be and will be excellent. And so I guess I wonder, looking at our committee and leadership, you know, what the priorities that you will set for our district as we're in a transitional time. We have excellent educators and we're all very proud. Many, many of our educators are Tiverton residents, but we're all very proud to serve and hold the public trust for Tiverton families. And your priorities and knowing them going forward will help us make decisions because we will not be able to do everything right now. We know that and recognize that. And we will do the best we can with the priorities you set as our school committee. And the teachers will continue to show up and serve the students and their families extremely well. And I know that for a fact about all the Tiverton educators. And it's a great place to be with great, hardworking people. And I think we need that leadership.
So before I bring up, come on up, but I'm going to add some context. So one of the things you heard from the three elementary principals was the social worker at Ranger, social worker at Fort Barton, and the guidance counselor at Pecassett. And I know in your packet, I'd given you some demographic information. If you don't mind, I'd just like to reiterate this. I think it's telling and really emphasizes why we need these critical people. So five percent of our students live with their grandparents. Twenty-two percent of our students live in a single-parent home. Twenty-nine percent of our students witness domestic violence. Twenty-seven percent of our students come from low income. And nineteen percent are in special education, you know? And not to stereotype any child or any of those statistics, but, you know, there's a direct correlation to a lot of those statistics and students needing additional support for social and emotional. And so without those people, those children are going to be devoid of that. So, thank you, Mr. Zatoli.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight with deep concerns about the ongoing impact of last year's budget cuts and the looming threat of future reductions. Cuts that will directly affect our students, our teachers, and the very foundation of our school community. Last year alone, we lost six dedicated teachers, including two who led our bridge program, an initiative that improved student attendance by over 2,000 days in just two years. Never mind the social, emotional support they lended to numerous students. The elimination of these positions has already had a profound effect on our ability to support students effectively. These cuts forced us to abandon a highly competitive middle school schedule and revert to a junior high model, diminishing the quality of education we provide. Our teachers are now stretched in, teaching five classes a day, no time for professional learning communities, which is a key driver of instructional improvement, or team time, the cornerstone of a true middle school experience. These essential components have been instrumental in our progress, as evidenced by improved attendance over 2,000 days, which I mentioned, rising Rycast scores over the last couple of years, fewer crisis reports. I, I spoke to school committee about this two years ago. My first year, we had ninety-eight crisis reports. That's not I need a little Band-Aid by the nurse. Those are children that are truly in crisis, that we're worried about their social well-being, their family structure. And we act on those accordingly. We had ninety-eight my first year. That's one every other day in the middle school. We've dramatically reduced that with our SEL staff and of course, the patience of our teachers. Our suspension rates are way down. We had 297 suspendable days my first year. We have fourteen this year. Increased student engagement and extracurricular activities, just to give you an idea, and we have fifty-two percent of our kids are in band, chorus, orchestra, or strings. I've never had that kind of engagement in any school. That's not counting our sports. Our cross-country is huge. And also our teacher attendance. We had a four last year in the, in school rankings across Rhode Island. That's amazing. I mean, I just, I mean, just think about middle school and think about teacher attendance, right? It's, it's hard there. It's a hard age to teach kids. And I can tell you, our teacher attendance is great this year. And that's a tribute to them, their patience and the culture. But it's not easy without those things. I can assure you of that. Now we're facing the potential loss of two to three more positions. This is not just a staffing issue, it's a crisis. Losing these educators would be devastating, especially for our most vulnerable students, many of whom rely on the specialized support and intervention our staff provides. The cumulative effect of these cuts threatens not only academic success, but also the social, emotional well-being of our students. We cannot allow years of hard-earned progress to be erased. I urge you to prioritize funding that safeguards our staffing levels and ensures that every student has access to a high-quality education. If we don't act now, we risk undoing all the progress that we've made in failing the students who need us the most. Obviously, I appreciate your time. I sat on school committee in my own town. It's a lot of time, most of it thankless. So I appreciate, and I would welcome the opportunity to discuss this further and explore solutions that will best serve our students and the community. Thank you.
Good evening. So I had a great school improvement team meeting earlier tonight, and we talked about impact and the impact on a high school. And, you know, I'm not going to go on a diatribe. I think everyone knows that, you know, when you reduce staff, you reduce offerings to students, especially at a high school level. Fewer teachers, class sizes increase, right? We know that our ratio, teacher-to-student ratio is strong. We want to keep that ratio. And when you take away those, those faculty members, it's, it's just detrimental to the student. Course offerings, right? We, we offer less to the students. We have students this year getting accepted to Boston College, Northeastern University, Northwestern University. It's because we're competing. We're competing with other high schools in the area. Our students are getting recognized and accepted because we have great offerings at Tiverton High School. Student engagement, morale, it drops, right? Students get attached to teachers. Teachers, we, we always recommend they build those relationships with kids. They start losing teachers. They feel it. It hurts. It hurts us. It hurts them. And support services. I don't have a math interventionist. I don't have a reading interventionist. Our SEL staff is critical, as you heard from the other principals, to the needs of the students. So you take that away, you're taking away that social, emotional support that all students need. So the cuts are unbelievable to think about. I don't know where I'll go. That was the conversation at our school improvement team meeting. When you lose faculty members, where do you start? All of them are important to the students at Tiverton High School as a whole. So those are some of the impacts that will be had at the high school. And hopefully you understand that and get a better feel for what we're looking at in the future.
Thank you to all of the principals for your heartfelt presentations this evening. Before we go any further, we did have Ms. McNamara sign up to speak. Shannon, did you want to?
Hello. Shannon McNamara, 65, Eastern Mellow Drive. So I had a couple of just points that I kind of tried to jot down while everyone was talking. You know, I completely understand where we're coming from this year, you know, after the whole battle we went through last year. And I think it's, I'm with the principals that, you know, we can't be losing staff. I mean, I think every year, we realize we just don't have the money. But I'm also wondering if at some point, we can start to look at what we can do as a community to get the money coming in. You know, we do have the buildings. Just looking at what other communities do, you know, New Bedford Voke has classes at night for adults. And that has to be a revenue stream for them. You know, is there something where we can speak with CCRI and looking at doing, you know, courses here locally, you know, maybe even other adult courses? That could be a great revenue stream for us because we're always, you know, hemorrhaging money, but what can we do to have it come in? I love that we are now, our homeschool kids are using our curriculum because we're getting those dollars. I think that that is amazing. And if we can reach out to even other communities and have them use our curriculum, if there's a way to do that, that could be state money coming in. Have we had a serious conversation with Little Compton? You know, they're coming up to the same edge of the cliff that we find ourselves on. You know, there's families in town who probably moved there six years ago, who can afford to live in the town because they're already in the town. Their problem is, is that new families can't afford to come in. But, you know, I think we need to get them to the table and say, listen, like, we're neighbors, we are both in the same boat here. What can we do to combine our districts and keep as many teachers as we can because we've done that, keep as many buildings open as we can because we've done that? I think that we really, really need to reach out to their school committee. And then my final question kind of goes back to, why is it, and I, I think that there was a misconception that my children went to Fort Barton last year, but they don't. They actually go to Ranger. But my question is, you know, why is it that it's always Fort Barton that seems to be on the chopping block as far as like a building to close? Like, I'm not saying, you know, looking at, looking at it from the perspective of just like five buildings in town. What building actually needs the most maintenance, needs the most work? Is there a way to do a shuffle in a better way that leaves the four best-built buildings that need the least amount of upkeep? You know, so those are, those are my questions or considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Just, I just want to say, some of the ideas that you propose are definitely good ones. And some that we have previously discussed and will discuss again, including the Little Compton proposal. But, you know, the, the issue at hand today is how are we going to manage our situation here and now? But thank you for coming up with that. Now, as far as Fort Barton as a building is concerned, it is the, the smallest of our schools physically. It has two floors, and that is a consideration. Whereas Ranger only has the one level, which is far more conducive to the youngest of our students. And Pecassett being larger and centrally located in the population center of our town, you know, it's, it's an important consideration as well. So it's not a, a matter of picking on Fort Barton. And as to the condition of our buildings, all five of them, significant money has been invested in each and every one. That includes this high school. And while it needs additional investment, without a doubt, if you recall, we just did the roofs and heating systems. We went out to bond for those things here and at the middle school. And those bonds are still relatively young. So there is a, a long-term commitment to both of these buildings as well. So it's a tough situation for everyone, everyone involved. But thank you for, for your comments. Dr. Senkione, did you, what I would like, before we move any further, I'd like your thoughts as to, you know, our, our last item on the agenda is consider and vote to balance the FY26 budget, which may include consolidation of the elementary schools. I haven't, you know, we've been very transparent about what we're intending to, to propose. Dr. Senkione, I want to hear from, from you. What is your recommendation here?
So my recommendation is always based upon what's in the best interest of our students and evaluating where we can best situate our staff and provide the greatest amount of services and so forth. And taking into account that I think we've pursued every possible option to raise revenue and write grants and have conversations with, with others. You know, we're still facing this, this drastic budget reduction this year. And so it comes down to, you know, do you want three elementary schools with no services? Or do you want two elementary schools that would have a social worker and would have specialists for math and, and reading? And under those circumstances, it's, it's clear as day to me, and it would be absolutely my recommendation, you go with two elementary schools.
Thank you. Mr. Andrade, as the, the finance expert in the room, do you have anything to add?
I'd like to echo Dr. Senkione as a, more, more so as a parent. My daughter is a elementary school student that uses specialized services. Her first couple of years at Pecassett, she was able to have a one-on-three ratio. And now with budget cuts, she's currently seeing a one-to-seven ratio. And her benchmark at the beginning of the year did show, I think as a result of that ratio, did show a decline. Fortunately now, hopefully here more Thursday during parent-teacher, that her benchmark continues to flourish, which she's fortunate of. But seeing her utilize those specialists, seeing her, how she's reading at home every evening, before this meeting, I read with her and I couldn't believe how well she did. So just not to use my daughter as an example, but to use every student, I don't see how a school, you know, a school district could operate without these specialists and social, emotional, social workers, et cetera. I think it's really tough. And then a second layer is, you know, we, we meet individually at And then a second layer is, you know, we meet individually at a leadership team and talking to Kristin, our union president, is to see all these PLCs that could be happening with collaboration. You know, there's some parents that may dislike a curriculum, might want to change, but without PLCs, it's very tough to change a curriculum because there would be no collaboration. PLCs is used to collaborate during those curriculums where, you know, you have a first-grade teacher that's a leader, working with all the other first-grade teachers to collaborate and brainstorm on how they can better themselves in each classroom. I think that's really key, looking as an outsider in. That's about all I got.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. And Mrs. Craig, I don't want to put you on the spot because I did not give you, I mean, I will tell you all, I warned Dr. Senkione and Mr. Andrade that I asked them to speak.
No, I'd be happy to just say a few things, though, Madam Chair, and our principals did such an amazing job, so I just can only add on to what they said. I would just say we cannot have a blind eye to the mental health crisis that's happening. Our social workers are of utmost importance every single day for every student, not just students with IEPs or who have special needs. Every student can access that school's social worker and mental health staff. And I just, it's imperative. If that is not in place, then that lands on our classroom teachers, and like Ms. Pont was saying on our principals, and they are already doing so much, we're asking so much of them. I just think that's an area that you have to keep of utmost importance when we're making these decisions.
Thank you very much. Okay. I think we've kind of exhausted our agenda this evening. You know, as the school committee chair, I get to enjoy sometimes being in pictures, shaking hands, kissing babies, but I also get the fun, unflattering part of taking a lead role in what is a difficult time for our school district. So in that vein, I have crafted a motion, and I would like to make the following motion as the chair. That motion would be to consolidate the Tiverton Elementary Schools from three to two, which will result in the Tiverton School Department ceasing elementary school operations at Fort Barton School after the completion of the current school year. This includes a directive for Tiverton School Superintendent Dr. Senkione to begin the notification process for affected parents and employees immediately. This also includes a directive for the Tiverton Superintendent to craft a consolidation plan or plans for school committee consideration at its next regularly scheduled meeting to include options to continue using Fort Barton, the Fort Barton School Building for other educational purposes for the foreseeable future. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, and can you read it again, please?
Certainly. Thank you. The motion is to consolidate the Tiverton Elementary Schools from three to two, which will result in the Tiverton School Department ceasing elementary school operations at Fort Barton School after the completion of the current school year. This includes a directive for Tiverton School Superintendent Dr. Senkione to begin the notification process for affected parents and employees immediately. This also includes a directive for Tiverton School Superintendent Dr. Senkione to craft a consolidation plan or plans for the school committee members at its next regularly scheduled meeting to include options to include, to continue using the Fort Barton School Building for other educational purposes for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. And can I ask for a roll call vote, please?
Do we have any discussion first?
Sorry. I was going to discuss.
I'll kick things off, if you don't mind. This is not an easy decision, and I, you know, it is what I believe to be in the best interest of our entire school district. When the voters approved the plan to build and rebuild the three elementary schools that we have today, we were a much different school system. You know, I've been talking about our declining enrollment for the better part of a year now. And, you know, just very quickly, high level, we're down over 30% of our student base over the last 20 years in that time. And there's no indication that those trends will reverse themselves. Every town in the East Bay and Aquatic Island who have lost enrollment have reduced the number of elementary schools. We're no different than them. My guiding principle is actually codified in Rhode Island General Law, Chapter 16. I mentioned this at our last meeting. School committees shall adopt the following code of basic management principles and ethical school standards, recognizing that first and the greatest concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending the public schools. For me, this means providing the best education possible for all students within our district with the resources we have. We have the ability to realize significant savings by reducing the number of class sections as well as savings in administrative transportation, potentially, and school lunch costs. We've talked about this as well. We have an anticipated deficit for this current fiscal year, which we have and will continue to discuss transparently in all of our meetings, as well as with the town. If we were to continue operating this school as an elementary school, it would come at the cost of the rest of the district in the form of elimination of services and programs. I'm not willing to make this sacrifice for the benefit of a school building. It's people, dedicated teachers, support staff, administrators, students, and families who make our schools, not the buildings. I will remind everyone that should this motion pass, we will continue to use this building as an educational facility in some form, at least until the debt on this building is satisfied, at which time we would work with the town regarding the next steps. And finally, if enrollments do increase materially in the next couple of years, we have the option to reopen the school. That is all I have. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
This is an incredibly difficult decision, a decision no one wants to make. However, we are tasked with the responsibility of providing services to all kids in town, and I don't want to see a scenario in which we don't have the interventionists that we need, that we can't provide SEL services. This is, we're living in a difficult time, and the social workers are critical. Students need them, and it's about thinking about all the kids in town. And my daughter's still a student. I don't want her to lose some of her great teachers as well. So very difficult decision, but one we need to make. So, thank you, Diane.
I will say, sorry, I have been on that side. When my son, who is now 28, was getting ready to enter kindergarten, Tiverton made another difficult decision. We had to close Non-Quid for exactly the same reasons. We had declining enrollment, we had budget constraints, we simply had to make a decision to move forward in a way that was going to be in the best interest for the community. I will say I am going to support the consolidation, but I do believe it's only the beginning. We, our budget deficits aren't going to get easier. You know, it's not going to get better. We need to all work together. We've heard some great ideas, you know, from Shannon, Mrs. Paquette, in her packet, I know she didn't present them, but also had some ideas for savings, and we really need to all work together going forward because it's not going to be, oh, we consolidated the schools, okay, now we're done. It's not going to get easier going forward, and we really need to find a way to come together, to find savings, to rebuild our fund balance, so that when things happen that are unexpected in our community, we can support our children, we can support our I know for every one of us, it is absolutely excruciatingly painful listening to all of you talk about who you're going to lose and what you're going to lose. This is not a happy decision. This is not an easy decision, and we know we're impacting real lives, kids, parents, staff. It's a decision we make with a heavy heart, but it's one that we have to make. We have to make it. We have to move forward. So let's work together. Let's move forward. Let's do what's in the best interest of our children, because that's what we're all here for at the end of the day.
Thank you very much. So we have the motion on the floor, and we have a second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. It has passed. Thank you very much. For announcements, future meetings, we have our next regularly scheduled meeting, February 25th, and then following that will be March 11th. So we're quickly marching into spring, everyone. And so now I will make a motion to go into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42465A2 for negotiations, updates for NEA and Council 94, Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, legal advice, Council 94 MOA, Rhode Island General Law 42465A, legal advice on FY25 budget.
Before I make that motion, on February 25th, could I just ask that we have an update on the superintendent search, please? And I will make the motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
Yes.
Am I yes?
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.